Call to me in the order of the October 11, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Wait, great. Do we have the Mariners Church represented for invocation? Yes, hi, we're welcoming Marau Yu Makumi.
Thank you very much, council members. What an honor it is for us to be able to partner in this way. Let us pray. To the Almighty, we invite your presence into this space. We commit this meeting into your hands. We humbly request you would craft the time of this gathering to do as you would have them do. Our Almighty, may the minds and hearts of these leaders and the members be in tandem with your desires for the people of Newport Beach and those affected by our beautiful city. We commit the ideas, conversations, and decisions made in this chamber into the hands of the Almighty. May the hearts and minds of those leaders be malleable to the leadership and conviction from the Almighty. We bless them and we pour over them. Praise you Almighty. We pray all these things. Amen.
Jesus name and amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, for Congress again, Councilman O'Neil, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands.
Thank you to Mariners Church. Okay, Madam Clerk, please read notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Would you please give a demonstration of the new noise notice we have? So that, that means your time is up. I respectfully request you to wrap it up. That's a three-minute mark. Okay, on to council announcements and oral reports, and oral reports for council members on committee activities and council members' requests for A1 items to place on the future agenda. Councilman O'Neil?
Yes, thank you. As the city's representative on ACCOC, I was able to attend the annual conference, which was held actually at one of the hotels in Huntington Beach during their first day of the airshow. So it was punctuated by a lot of loud noises. Then we had the Costa Mesa, I was able to attend the Costa Mesa City Council to discuss the TCA, which I'm also the city's representative on. And then I was able to attend with Council Member Brenner and Council Member Avery, the Newport Mesa Unified School District State of the Schools breakfast. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Duffield?
Thank you. I held our last, well, for me, Water Quality Committee meeting and I can report clearly that the ocean waters and the bay waters around us are all getting all As. So we have great water quality.
I'm sorry, Councilman O'Neil had one more thing. Go ahead.
Yep, sorry, I forgot I had a slide.
Sorry.
No, my fault. So we have good news. Newport Beach's general plan housing element update is now certified. Actually, only nine of 35 agencies in Orange County right now with a certified housing element, which of course speaks to the difficult challenges that this mandate has put on cities. On October 5th, we received the letter from the State Department of Housing and Community Development certifying the housing element. Our housing element complies with state law and most of the folks who have been a part of this know that we've been working on this since at least March of 2020, when we were told that we would need to be planning for 4,845 new housing units to meet the Regional Housing Needs Assessment set by the state. The city has held over 50 public meetings, including workshops, study sessions, and hearings, and produced seven draft iterations of the document. Sorry, if I don't laugh, I'm gonna cry. Newport Beach now has until February of 2025 to update the land use element. Yeah, 20, is that right? 2025? Okay, shoot, that's later than I thought. Good, alright. And rezone the identified housing opportunity sites. And so just wanted to say thank you to members of the community who participated in this, including especially our Housing Element Update Commission, and especially to our staff as well who have worked so hard on this. So this is kind of step one, and we keep going. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilman Duffield, did I let you get it all? Okay, great, thank you. Good, good report card, good note to leave on. Okay, Councilman Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. A few announcements. I attended the SCAG Regional Board Meeting on October 6th. I was a judge with Councilmember Brenner for the Sand Cat Newport Chamber Sand Castle Contest. It's always an amazing event. I love it, and so much enthusiasm. And I attended the Newport Beach Fire Service Day last Sunday. This is, isn't this Fire Service Week? Yeah, so congratulations and as we honor our first responders for their dedication and commitment to our community, safety in our community. I have a slide, I think, somewhere. The 23rd Annual Newport Beach Film Festival begins Thursday, this Thursday, October 13th, and runs one week through October 20th. This year's festival will feature more than 300 films from over 50 countries. And for more information and tickets, go to NewportBeachFilmFest.com. And then I would like to do an A1 to clarify from our last City Council meeting on the subject of fractional ownership. I would like to A1 to direct the Planning Commission at its January 5th, 2023 meeting to make a recommendation, to make recommendations to the City Council regarding regulations of fractional ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner?
Yes, I have too many notes. Well, I played my first game of pickleball last week, which was exciting, and I understand why everybody is so interested in that. It was really fun and relatively easy, which was nice. I attended a undergrounding meeting that Mike Senicori held for the residents of Corona Del Mar where we still have some overhead wires, but it looks like the price is unknown at this point in time, somewhere above $35,000 per property. So I'm not sure how many more of our assessments districts we'll be having in the near future. I wanted to announce that we have an upcoming event at Corona Del Mar High School. The foundation is doing a 60th anniversary party, and that is going to be on October the 22nd. They'll, during the day, there will be an open house at the school. There'll be dance recitals and different kinds of pep rallies and different things like that. But at 2:00, there's going to be a dedication to the, for the new track for Coach Bill Sumner, who is quite beloved by people who've run at Corona Del Mar High School. And then in the evening, there will be a rock festival with English, the English Beat, and that's at the Dunes from 5:30 to 10. You need to get tickets. Go to CDM Foundation in order to get that. And I also spoke to the CDM Speech and Debate Team, which was really fun being out at school in the old little theater where I first started school many, 60 years ago, as a matter of fact. So anyway, that was fun. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mayor. I represent the city on the Orange County Sanitation District Board, and we had a meeting last week. And I also, as Councilmember O'Neil mentioned, attended the state of the school, the Newport Mesa School District's, the state of the schools address. And it was really, I thought, exceptionally well done and was a good, I just felt that we've got a lot of competency in the school district of Newport Mesa. And there was demonstrations by students. There were all, all employee groups represented very well. And I thought our, the new superintendent did an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Councilman Brenner had a slide?
I do have another slide. It's for a free document shredding e-waste disposal and organics kitchen pail pickup event on Saturday, October the 22nd, also, from 8:00 AM till noon at the Big Canyon Reservoir Parking Lot. And this was so well-attended last time that they've done another one in relatively short time. So hopefully, everybody knows about this one and can get their, their shredding and e-waste up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Brotenblom?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, I think I have one slide here. We have a volunteer day coming up this Saturday. We'll meet at City Hall. And that's it. It's called Renew Newport, and it's gonna be, this is gonna be one of hopefully many events we do every year, but this is the inaugural volunteer day. It's a citywide day. We have over 30 projects. Those projects span from beach cleanup to beautification of individuals whose homes might be neglected or due to physical or financial restrictions. Please join us. You can sign up online at renewnewport.com to be a volunteer or a team leader. The kickoff is here at City Hall between 8:00 to 9:00 AM, and then you'll head out for a project that sounds the most exciting for your desire to serve the community and hopefully have a great experience giving to your neighbors. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 14. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar. The speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neil? Councilman Duffield? Councilman Dixon?
I am not going to pull anything, but I'd like the city manager to talk about item number four at whatever point it makes sense, just to educate the community on this good program. Thank you.
I think now's a good time. Yeah, that way if someone else... Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Dixon. This is actually a grant application with the Coastal Commission to fund our pilot program that we are doing as part of the new JG building that's being built. Part of the requirement there with the Coastal Commission was to ensure we do a scholarship program for those in more needy areas to be able to have access to the program. And so it would fund, we want to start off small. We're gonna fund about 10 applications of folks who are in a high-need area, you know, like a school lunch program, those kind of qualification areas. We'll focus in on the Newport Mesa School District students. And if they apply and meet the requirements, we will fund fully their, their registration fees and all of the gear and everything so they can participate fully in the, in the junior guard program. And then we're hopeful, hopefully, as we get to understand how best to attract and maintain the program, we want to grow that. So eventually, we'll end up hopefully with up to 10% scholarship funding for 10% of the class size that we do for each of the JG classes each year. So looking to grow that as we go on.
That's very good. Thank you very much. It's important for the community to know that next spring their children who are interested could apply. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brenner?
None.
Councilman Avery?
I have none.
Mayor Brotenblom?
I have recusal on number eight due to real property interests.
Right, and I have none. Do we have a motion?
We do have a motion, Mayor. I move the balance of consent with changes to the minutes. I'm recusing myself of item eight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brenner. Okay, public comments on this item. This is items 1 through 14 of the consent calendar. Please come forward.
Mayor Moudun, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to comment on number 11, which is the Planning Commission Agenda Report. First, I would like to point out the City of Newport Beach's council has not always had a consent calendar. And even when it had a consent calendar, the report from the, of the planning commission activities since your last meeting was not always on the consent calendar. It frequently was, either it was an oral report that was regularly scheduled so that the council would be informed what happened at the planning commission, could interact with the planning director and provide guidance to them on what they were doing wrong, if they were doing something wrong, and perhaps if you disagreed with a action that they had taken, to call that action up for review. And even when it was on the consent calendar, it was routinely pulled off the consent calendar to hold that discussion. And I would suggest this report might be one which you would want to do that because the October 6th meeting that you're hearing a report about in writing only is, all you're told is that they did something very little about a meeting that was held at your request. The meeting was specially scheduled on October 6th for your direction about fractional home ownership. The direction they were given seemed to me to be extremely clear. They were told that they were supposed to spend that study session unpacking the St. Helena ordinance restricting the use of fractional ownership and to integrate that into our own code so that it would capture the new phenomenon of internet-sold fractional ownership, but not include the traditional shared homes by families or friends. When October 6th came, to my great surprise, the planning director relegated the St. Helena Code and the possibility of integrating that to a tiny little bullet point here in option A. This is a presentation from that meeting of 42 slides, and said that was not a good option, and instead presented to them eight different slides of something that you had not reviewed, not asked them to consider at all, which is declaring these new kind of fractional ownerships to be a new land use and to formulate regulations that would actually legalize them, one every five feet, 500 feet in R1 areas and unlimited number of them in other residential areas. That had no resemblance at all that I could see to the direction that you had given to the planning commission. So I would suggest that you perhaps want to pull this off the consent calendar so that you can ask what happened and perhaps provide some correction to them. And the second aspect of what you asked them to do was to do the unpacking of the St. Helena ordinance very expeditiously. You were promised it could be done in two meetings. Instead, the planning commission appointed an ad hoc committee that is gonna take three months looking at this new proposal that you did not ask them to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on the consent calendar. See no other requests to speak on this item. We'll bring it back. We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3, Ordinance 2022, that's 21, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach Granting Non-Ecclusive Franchise Agreements for Commercial Solid Waste and Veritable Materials Handling Services Within the City of Newport Beach. Councilmembers Dixon, Duffield. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have public comments on non-agenda items. If you have a sign, now's the time to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmen and women. My name is Sean Valteri Abdali. I'm the operator of the famous tennis and pickleball club in town. First of all, I would like to apologize to all of you for the type of hearing that you experienced last time. I'm really saddened to tell you that since that time, a couple persons have come forward and admitted that that night they were reading a script and they did not want to say what they did, and basically they were pressured. I'm very proud of those individuals that came forward. I'm also very embarrassed because that did not represent our membership. As a matter of fact, many of our members that supported Plan B did not speak that night because they were ambushed, and it was just a really hostile, hostile, I guess, environment. So I'm really sorry. I, I'm telling you, our membership is nothing like that. Said that, this whole thing comes down to time. You have the ability, at least some ability, to save our pickleball courts. You have the ability to save our club. We are running out of time because the managing owner has to face the judge in a few months, in about seven, eight months, maybe a little shorter, to submit what he's got, at least for the hotel side and the pickleball side. We know that there's gonna be a process. We've already started working with the city with a process. I ran tennis clubs my whole life, and now we have the most successful pickleball club. We will work with the city to go through those processes. Please consider a rehearing so you can hear from both sides, from the people who support it and oppose it. It's a very complicated situation, and unfortunately, I'm really appalled that tomorrow night at Coastal, at the Coastal Commission, they are voting on a waiver for high density on that property, on the tennis property, pickleball property, and the golf property. Very confusing. Why would that happen if the plan is for this club to stay for 70 years and so on? Why? So again, we know you will do the right thing. We just, I'm just begging you to please consider a rehearing for Plan B. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Counsel, my name is Brent Martin. I've been in front of you before talking about the CAD and some of the dredge material management issues that exist here in Newport Bay. You know, we sent you guys, some of you, an email pointing out that there was a missing technical guidance in this evaluation. That guidance is actually put out by the Army Corps of Engineers. It's called the Sub-Aquous Capping Guidance Manual. The really easy way to think about it, you have three disposal types, a nearshore, an offshore, and a CAD. You need three technical guidance manuals to walk you through the suitability for each one of those disposals. The offshore is covered by the ocean manual. The inland testing manual covers the nearshore placement, and the sub-aquous capping guidance, which has been missed on capping projects for the last four rounds, essentially, is what governs that. But, but don't take my word for it. Let me just go ahead and read you what the purpose and scope is out of that guidance document. The technical guidance in this report is intended for use by USACE and EPA personnel, state regulatory personnel, as well as dredging permit applicants and others, e.g., scientists, engineers, managers, and others involved or concerned citizens. So we are concerned citizens. This is the right manual for this purpose, even if it was overlooked by the EPA. Now, what's important here is that, for one, it does tell you how you need to test. And so, you know, we've been arguing about this model. What actually talks about the model in there, but nowhere does it allow the substitution of that model for actual water quality data from the contaminated sediments. Nowhere. There is no allowance for that. That is something that was brought up by consultants only. The other thing is that we want to bring up before I run out of time here, is that we went out and collected some more sediment samples in the unsuitable areas where we've been asking you guys to do that, asking you to instruct public works or at least recommend that. So we went back out, and let me just show you this. So this is basically from that Newport Channel 1 area, and it supports a lot of what we've been saying, that there's some sand below that dredge material. That sand is beach-quality sand. It lives in the dredge permit, but unfortunately, the sampling that went on did not split the samples like that. We also went back to the main Channel 1 and main Channel 2 areas. I mean, can you believe it? It literally took half a day to collect some more samples back there? That's all it took, 1,000 bucks worth of chemistry. That's what we've been arguing about this whole time. We got in there, we found some mercury samples that were over nine, right? And so the highest amount that's been reported so far is five, and that material is going to the CAD. These other areas where you're gonna be dredging are at 9.32, and I can tell you that is not the highest mercury sample that's out there. We weren't targeting that. We were just going out and sampling these unsuitable areas. So when, when you hear this, these comments that, oh, your kids are playing with this stuff, that's actually not true. It's not even close to being true. The most contaminated material is actually below the dredge depth from 20 to 22 feet, and the stuff that's above the dredge depth is actually clear to go offshore. It's below the mercury concentration. So you could actually come up with some dual management. But the real question is, what are you exposing when you pull this stuff up? Nine parts per million of mercury? Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Shawna Councilman, for those of you who don't know. It's kind of silly, right? Two weeks ago, we stood here, as we have done countless times, asking you to listen and to care about our perspective. And after reaching out to many of you whom I deeply respect, I realized that many are content being told by others what is best for our bay. I'd like to simplify this choice in hopes that you would do me the respect of at least pondering the outcome. We start this journey with one consultant, Anchor QEA. They present their plan for what is now an eight-acre CAD in our recreational residential anchorage. The City of Newport Beach staff take this as their truth and pass on this plan to you, the council. You, in turn, take the staff's findings provided by Anchor QEA and vote to move forward, accepting once again the anchor plan as truth. During this process, Anchor QEA makes two major errors, that we know of. They do not follow the usage sub-aquacious capping technical guidance manual that is required by the Army Corps for all to adhere to when vetting a CAD in any environment. The core samples taken are not separated into bad material and clean material as noted in the aforementioned Army Corps manual. Instead, they are what is known as homogenized, mixed together, creating a less toxic outcome due to dilution of the sample. The EIR is based on the information provided by Anchor QEA. The Water Quality Board once again falls to this incorrect sampling as their facts. And now, while Coastal Commission pushes forward based on the City of Newport Beach perspective, what I hear when speaking with all of you is, and I quote, "We'll let Coastal Commission make that decision." This decision to rely on inaccurate process is heartbreaking when there are other options that were never properly vetted. Every decision made is really made by Anchor QEA, who has already profited and stands to gain monetarily in the future by turning our beautiful anchorage into a dump site. Please listen to Friends of Newport Harbor. There are multiple solutions that are permanent. We call the process your house of cards, and we ask you to pull this request from the Coastal Commission Agenda until at least you properly test and follow the required guidance manual and truly vet the better options that are true cleanup of our bay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good evening. Seth Christian. In the city's own EIR report that was part of the application to the Coastal Commission, it admits to manipulating the EPA to increase their standard of pollutants from one part per million to 1.5 parts per million in order to get the sediment volume levels they need to build an industrial, commercial CAD in a residential, recreational harbor. In other words, through lobbying, they increased the EPA's long-held standard of pollution levels that are acceptable by 50%. What happens when corporations and corrupt politicians manipulate government agencies? We all experienced what happened when Purdue Pharmaceuticals manipulated the FDA into allowing OxyContin, a time-release capsule, a nationwide opioid epidemic. We all experienced what happened when the banks manipulated the credit rating agencies to legitimize mortgage-backed derivatives, global financial collapse. What happens when lobbyists and special interests manipulate the FDA? A simple Google search will tell you of the countless times that lobbyists and special interests manipulated the FDA. Probably the most egregious example of this we all remember as a dark spot on our nation's history. Let me read a few headlines. Public misled on air quality after 9/11 attack, judge says. EPA whistleblower says US hid 9/11 dust danger. Former EPA leader apologizes for saying New York Air was safe. "Former EPA Leader Apologizes For Saying New York Air Was Safe After 9/11." "I am glad to reassure the people of New York and Washington, D.C. that their air is safe to breathe and their water is safe to drink," said Christie Todd Whitman. That turned out not to be the case. Insuing investigations, including a damning 2003 report by the EPA's Inspector General, found that the agency did not have the necessary data to conclude the air was safe. When a congressman was asked if the EPA has put a better system in place, he replied, "I'm not confident that there would be much change. They have not made systemic changes that I'm aware of." This is the case with this CAD. The city and the EPA do not have the necessary data to conclude the proposal is safe. We just heard from the environmental consultant that the necessary tests were not performed, but when the tests were performed, they not only failed, but they failed overwhelmingly. We're at a time where our nation's institutions have been compromised. The FDA, the EPA, the FBI, the CIA can all be manipulated by bad actors. An industrial commercial CAD has never been done in a residential recreational harbor. Additional testing will reveal this, and the necessary testing has not been done. Please do not make the mistake of hiding behind a compromised agency and put all of our friends and families at risk of being exposed to this material that is unsuitable for our open ocean, that is even unsuitable for our open ocean disposal, by dumping it in our residential recreational harbor, which is worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Thomas. I'm a hairdresser in Corona del Mar, and my family's legacy goes back to 1911. This is a photo of my great-grandparents and my grandmother here at Newport Beach. And today I was thinking, when you think about the future, do you question what your legacy will be? I do. And I think about my family that has grown up here and the fact that my children have participated in activities in the bay, that we boat on the bay, and that I need to leave my future legacy to my children and my grandchildren. And I think you, as council members and business owners and people that have grown up in the area and care about Newport Harbor, should really take heed of what my other colleagues have said tonight, and please take a pause on this and don't push it through. Do some more studying and really consider what the impact of putting some toxic stuff in the bottom of our bay will be to our children, our grandchildren, and the rest of the area that comes and enjoys our beautiful bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Muldoon and City Council members. My business partner, Ryan, and I wanted to thank you for your decision last week, or last meeting. The City Council made a thought-out and well-reasoned decision to return Robert O'Hill's plan to the Planning Commission to allow for the inclusion of pickleball. Since our last time together, the rumor mill has been going quite strong. There have been pinky promises about future pickleball courts and fear-mongering about massive apartment projects. Ryan and I came here to set the record straight. We do not have plans to build apartments. The only plans that we have is that what we gave to Robert, a fully negotiated lease with a local operator to operate pickleball and tennis for the next 20 years. The lease is for 20 years, and it will bring much-needed improvements to the locker rooms, the courts, and the rest of the facilities. All that needs to be done is for Robert to sign the lease so everyone can get back to playing pickleball and enjoying the club the way it was intended. We believe the best way to protect pickleball is to include pickleball in the plans. If pickleball is not included in the plans, then it's an unnecessary opportunity to not deliver what was promised. We know that the city's public hearing process provides the best opportunity for residents and members to review the plans of the club. The plans need to include pickleball as part of a comprehensive project so that council and the members of the community have a meaningful opportunity to understand what is being proposed and to add their insights and comments. The way it is set up now for the project to go back to the Planning Commission with pickleball gives the public a chance to comment on the comprehensive plan prior to its approval. We respectfully ask the City Council to stay the course and not approve a motion of reconsideration. You got it right the first time. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dalen Lawrence. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, and I'm also a member at TTC. I want to ask that you, I understand that you're going to bring back for consideration Plan B, and I'm going to ask that you vote that down. I'm sorry to hear that it's being brought up. I also ask specifically that Diane Dixon, that you recuse your vote because I'm holding a flyer where Robert O'Hill is actually contributing $4,900 to be part of your host committee for your upcoming election. So I ask that you do that. I think the council was right two weeks ago when this place was filled with active pickleballers, and you can see that it's not tonight. And you voted five to two against it. This not-ready-for-prime-time proposal did not include pickleball, and it upsets hundreds, if not thousands, of Newport citizens. The council was right in seeing that although Mr. O'Hill is designated by the city as being managing partner, nothing can happen without some consent from the other owners. So this giant nothing burger of a plan is not ready for a vote. Wouldn't it be better if you waited until after the partners finished their litigation and could come back with a unified vision? The council was right when it said that we're not here to get in the middle of a private dispute. It seems like some of you members clearly do want to take a side with one owner, no matter what your constituents might want. Rest assured, all of the Newport pickleballers will see this video tonight, if they're not already watching. Just because they're not here doesn't mean they're not aware of what's going on. In fact, the feed on the independent group is going crazy about some of the things that have already been said in this meeting live. Rest assured that all of the Newport pickleballers will see the video tonight, and if you decide to reconsider this Plan B, we will be joining you with twice the number that we brought before. Thank you for your time. May I submit this as some sort of a...
Sure. Both sides are given to all people up here, both parties, both sides. So you may submit it, but to ask one member to accuse themselves and not the other is disingenuous. We're also familiar with your anonymous group and the threats that you have made to other pickleball members and the most hostile crowd I've ever seen in this chamber. So your threats, you know, they're not going to work on the club. I don't think definitely not going to work on us.
Next speaker.
I'm Darcy Bozias, and just two weeks ago, I stood in front of you, and I shared concerns of almost 100 pickleball members who were present here waving paddles, others watching online, and over 500 pickleball club members, as well as Newport Beach residents who signed a petition, and we were all in opposition of the plan amendment. We were elated following almost two hours of discussion among you council members when the plan was voted down five to two. You were very clear in your reasoning that this plan amendment was not ready for a vote and that the promises of the landowner to reinsert pickleball courts in his plan renderings at a later date was not acceptable to you. And the council ruled that he needed to go through the standard formal process and resubmit the plans that clearly showed the inclusion of those 28 pickleball courts. This morning, we learned that the landowner requested that this matter be reconsidered and that you were going to vote on that and that it could be placed on the agenda for two weeks from, for two weeks from now. I'm just wondering, what changed in 14 days? I'm assuming it's virtually impossible that plans had been submitted to and were already approved by the Planning Commission with all the necessary traffic studies and other requirements, including public notices and public debates. So I just want to understand what's going on. Why would the City Council allow an applicant to take a shortcut to a process that you emphatically stated was necessary? Why would any council member flip-flop on their ruling within days of making it? If this council votes to reconsider this plan amendment within days of you declaring that the landowner needs to go through a formal process, what message does that send to your constituents? A lot of people are going to be watching how you vote tonight, and I'm just asking for you to be a good example of good governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak here today. My name is Nick Van Nieuwenhoof, and I am a new, so we're a new resident here in Newport Beach. I grew up in Dallas, Texas, but I came here because of the leadership of this council and of this city and being one of the greatest coastal cities ever. So I want to read a quick statement here. CADs are for commercial industry harbors like the ones in this photo and these photos that you see around here. Do these harbors look like Newport Beach to you? Do these look like the Newport Beach that bring tons of people doing the opposite of what we're seeing, moving from Texas to California? No. No, they do not. CAD has never been done in the residential recreational harbor before, and it never should. Newport Beach is a residential recreation harbor and should remain that way, and we do not want CAD in our harbor. So just in a personal note from my side here is that when I grew up in Texas, in the town, they made a dump in the middle of the city. It started off as just a football field. They said it was just going to be a football field. By the time I was done with middle school, that football field had become five football fields. Today, in Carrollton and Lewisville in Texas, it's now known as Trash Mountain. And that community, my community back then, gave in a little bit. And if we give in just a little bit to allowing this, what's next? Where does this grow to? And we really should fight for our harbors, and this is the reason why people are here. So thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Can I say something real quick? I know you guys love Newport Beach as much as I do and everybody else, and honestly, I know that you guys don't want to have this. So the CAD, there's other options, and there's other options that, you know, we can look into. So if you guys can just, you know, think about it and just wait, just wait. Look at different options. Let's do a little more testing, because I know you guys care about the bay as much as we do. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Council. My name's Robin Moore. I have a couple notes I want to make it quick. Really glad you got to come play pickleball. I hope all of you have had that experience at some point. If not, we'd love to host you. I'm asking for reconsideration also for Plan B. The last meeting, there was a lot of misunderstanding, and the more I talk to people, the more I realize that we are all in favor of pickleball. We may have different ways of trying to get there. We may not agree on how to get there. Plan B, in our opinion, is the best way to get there. We submitted, I believe, over 2,000 signed petitions to the council in favor of Plan B, and I just think the crux of this whole thing is that we all want the same thing. And I'm just so distressed about how adversarial it's gotten over something that everybody really has the same goal. It's interesting to me that the other owners have come forward and continue to support pickleball. They have told you on several occasions that that's what they want for the community, but yet they're still in court fighting over the use of the property. So I think that's a little disingenuous as well. Public has had plenty of opportunities to come and speak to you all. So saying that we need, you know, another opportunity for the public to come forward and tell you how they feel, I'm just trying to keep it short and sweet. We've been here so often. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone, council members, councilwomen, city managers. I live in Newport Beach in Lido Village, and I really look forward every Sunday for something we call Jiddo Day or Grandfather Day. My grandchildren, my children Natalia, Jordan, Zachary, Maya, and their little kids Riley and Leila, they come, and we all play on the beach, and they come in the water and the pets, and everybody spends the day every Sunday on the Lido Bridge beach right there. And just, I just heard about this, and I was shocked that it's even being considered to have a dump right there in the harbor where we all live and play. I mean, this is our home, and I'm sure, I have no doubt, you guys will do the right thing. There are other options, and I appreciate your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I am, my name is Slavica. I'm a local business owner, and I'm not going to get involved in any old technicalities because I'm not as informal these people are. But I'm here and behave approximately 2,000 people. I am working in a building that's basically called the Beauty Building, or 20 salons. And that's where approximately four generations are hanging out every day. And whoever comes into beauty salon, it's like to you gentlemen's locker room. You solve all the problems there. We solve all the problems what's going on here. So we are so fortunate to live in Orange County, and especially Newport Beach, enormous amount of very educated people. So they come to me and ask me questions, and of course, I do not have the answers. Those are the answers that you have. The only person of this city council, I know the education, I mean, I know the business. It's Noah, because Noah and myself share enormous amount of people. We have the same clientele. I don't know what your professions are, what your expertise are, but the only thing the residents of Newport Beach is asking, they don't want to work against you. We don't want to go, we want to work with you, just to be patient, give them extra time. All the volunteers, educated people in the field of physics, chemistry, anything related to environment, have a separate meeting, invite them, free of charge, they will give you their expertise, because we all want to be clean, especially after pandemic. Everyone is eating healthy. Everyone is going to a gym. Everyone takes shower, so why not keep the bay clean? That's all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Devon Kelly, and I'm here today as a member of the community, and I'm also representing Newport Harbor Foundation. And I'll just give you a quick one on that. The Newport Harbor Foundation was created for the purpose of preserving, protecting, and enhancing Newport Harbor for the benefit of the City of Newport Beach, the homeowners on or near the bay, the commercial operators in the bay, and the recreational users of the bay. The foundation's founders, contributors, and members are made up of individuals and businesses who have a long history of using and enjoying the harbor and a vested interest in its enhancement and preservation for use by current and future generations. That aside, personally, I have a long history here. I grew up sailing a sea scowl in the bay in the Turning Basin, spending a lot of time upside down. I'm so old that I remember water skiing in the Back Bay behind a 13-foot flat whaler with a 40-horse Evanrude. I took swimming lessons on Babo Island because there's no pools. I went clamming at low tide. I jumped on Barbara Beak's trampoline on Oceanfront. So I've been here a long time, so I have a vested interest in this bay. First of all, thank you for your steadfast approval of the dredging and the CAD project, and thanks to our city staff and the Councilman Duffield for all your efforts to bring it to fruition. The project for Newport Harbor has been studied, it's been vetted, it's been approved by Fish and Wildlife, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board, the City of Newport Beach, and it was voted 7-0 approval by the Harbor Commission. The Environmental Impact Report has been certified. The dredging project will remove materials that are currently lying on the floor of the harbor and make significant improvements to the water quality according to the EPA. This material is not harmful to humans or vertebrates or invertebrates of the harbor. The City Council does not need to do anything this evening, but just stay the course. We will soon have the last approval in hand, and we can all benefit from a project that will finally bring our harbor to its design depth, enhance tidal flushing, and significantly improve our water quality. Please know this evening that the members of Newport Harbor Foundation and the silent majority of your constituents stand behind all of you in your steadfast support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Dirk Larson. I apologize for my appearance. I'm here to discuss the pickleball situation tonight. I'm missing my ladder that started at 5:00. First of all, Ms. Brenner, I'm happy to hear you came and played. But Mayor Pro Tim Noah, I got to tell you, I'm getting tired of hearing women whisper about you back here in the lobby, and you're the one they want. So I don't know, it's the position, the man bun, but your audience in female admiration group is wide and far. And just bachelor to bachelor, I think you'd be a hit at the Tuesday afternoon Housewives Ladder.
She's probably listening, actually.
There you go. Anyway, I don't know what to add at this point to this pickleball thing. In fact, you know, the joy I've gotten tonight was listening to previous young lady talk about growing up here, or the other young lady who, her background went to, back to 1911. My background goes back to 1958. My aunt was the very first Miss Crandall Mar, Molly McClintock. I love this area. I love this pickleball club. We haven't created, actually, Sean created it, and it's just mushroomed into really something that's very special. But I remember back in the 70s from Sea Cliff riding my Schwinn bicycle there with my Jimmy Connors Wilson 2000 racket and playing tennis there while my sister and my cousin were with their horses. You guys remember the horse corrals down right on the beach? So this is very dear to my heart, what happens to this pickleball club, because I am still not over the fact that where I spent my prom in 1978 at the Bobby McGee's on PCH is now a Starbucks and a mattress factory. So the idea that we would lose this pickleball club is, like I said, it would throw me into therapy. You know, as I was listening at the last meeting, and wow, I thought it was very charged. And again, I'm just so disappointed that, why do things in life get so ugly? Why can't we talk? Why can't we find compromise? I have no idea, guys. It just, I just felt so defeated at our last meeting. These people that I've played tennis, or excuse me, played pickleball with had so much anger towards Sean over here. And all I can tell you is, two years ago, when I joined this pickleball club, Sean, his staff, everyone opened their arms. It was a wonderful thing for me to enjoy, and I'm grateful to him for that. And that is why I'm up here, most importantly, to defend his honor tonight. Lastly, oh gosh, my time is going fast. So Ms. Dixon, you brought up at the last meeting about faith, and everyone booed you. Well, I'd like to talk tonight just very quickly about faith. And we have this plan, this Plan B, and everything is so complicated. And I realize every time I come here, there's four more lawyers. But we've got this idea of this resort. We just have to figure out this pickleball thing and this parking and the noise. And so therefore, I'm asking the council, please, as I walk away, to please reconsider this Plan B. And because this is such a precedent-setting thing with pickleball, maybe we can all come to an agreement and press this project forward where all sides are happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Maldune. My name is Dave Rhodes. I've been a resident in Lido Isle since 86, and I've spoken with you before. I'm not going to go over those items. In light of tonight, what I heard tonight and what I heard a couple days ago is that we have new data indicating that some of the material is, the toxic material is at a 22-foot or 20-foot depth. And I think that's a game changer too for me as an architect, looking at depths of material when I look at sites. If that material truly is at 20 or 22-foot depth, then I would not think that we would need to dredge as we've been looking at all along. So in light of the new material, I think we need to do more testing, which we always said. But I think you really do have a smoking gun now in front of you, you know? We're all here to educate ourselves and try to get smarter about all of this. But it's never too late to take one more look. Now, if it turns out that that's not true, fine. But if it is true, that is a smoking gun for us. We need to look at it, test it, and smart people, you know, make mistakes, and they admit them. I'd ask you to reconsider your application to the Coastal Commission and pull that just for a little bit of time to test yourselves to be sure. Councilmember Duffy, out in front of your place over there, if you had known when you started this and went and tried to do the best thing for Newport, and you have a big history of Newport here, of doing the right thing. When you started this, if you'd have known that that material was at 20-foot, 22-foot deep and at a 9 parts per million, I don't think you would have proposed what you're proposing now or what you went along with. So things changed. I don't blame you, but I think you should look at this again. I would blame you if you didn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Maldune and members of the council. My name is Steve Scully. I'm a long-term resident of Newport Beach, a user of the harbor, and I'm the current chairman of the Newport Beach Harbor Commission. I'm here today to speak in support of the CAD and the city's effort to dredge our harbor. And the CAD is extremely important to store the unsuitable sediment that's in our harbor today. Today, there's parts of our harbor that are too shallow. We have to dredge it, and we need to dredge it in the short term, not the long term. The city has worked hard over the years to mitigate the sediment coming into the harbor and to mitigate the amount of pollution coming into our harbor. Today, our harbor is in the best shape it's ever been, and the water quality is outstanding. And I think it's a real testament to the work that's been done here with the city. I'm here to report to you that the Harbor Commission has worked very hard with various departments of the city on this topic. We've debated for hours all the different options, and we've gone through the hundreds, if not thousands, of pages of material that has been put together to address this unsuitable material. The CAD is the only option, it's the only permissible option, and it's the only executable option. We cannot barge it underneath the bridge and put it on lower castaway. We can't dry it somewhere in the harbor and send thousands of trucks to Kettleman City or wherever the place may be. Those truly are not options. The sediment is in our harbor today. It's not another city's problem. We just can't dump it in the ocean. We own it, and we need to do something with it. We need to build the CAD and put this unsuitable material in it in the short term. The CAD is our only option, and to testament to this council, the work that's been done in Washington to get the money to be able to dredge our harbor and put this together is here today. It will not be here in the future. We need to get it while we can now and conclude this in the short term. It is important to recognize that we've been successful in getting all the permits that we've needed other than the Coastal Commission permit. Recently, we've gotten the Water Board permit, and we will be in front of the Coastal Commission this Friday. I think it's important to understand that as these approvals come, as these permits are granted, that the city will abide by every condition that these agencies set forth to ensure that our water quality is of the utmost highest standard. Thank you for allowing me the time to express my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward. And if you plan to speak on any other item, now is a good time to come to the front. Yes.
Good evening. David Tanner. Just for the record, for 47 years, I've been an environmental and regulatory consultant. I was the owner of environmental and regulatory specialists in Newport Beach. And I'm here to talk about the dredging project. I'm in favor of dredging, but I'm not in favor of the CAD. So dredging is something that needs to happen. I think what you've heard tonight is that there's been a change in circumstances from when you, the city council, evaluated the information when your testing was done. I think, like the prior speaker said, this is a game changer, and I think you should take some time to reconsider. Now, if you feel that you can't, you're over barrel, you're going to lose financing, or there's some reason that you don't want to do this, I would ask that the city council make it perfectly clear to the Coastal Commission for their hearing that it's okay with you. If they re-study, they look at alternatives. I believe there is an upland disposal site within the city, within the coastal zone, that may be feasible. I don't speak for the landowner. This is just my professional opinion. So I would like you, if you can't overturn, if you don't, pull it off the agenda to make it clear to the Coastal Commission that they can do additional studies because there have been changes in circumstances, and you do not object. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Maldune, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I have a non-agenda comment I've been intending to make for many meetings. I was trying to pick a meeting that was not too long, so the comments would not tax you. And despite the many comments you've just heard, I think this is going to be a short meeting, so I'm going to make my comment now. What I wanted to call your attention to was the lobbyist registration ordinance that we have in Newport Beach. I think all of you may recall debating this back in 2019, and in January of 2020, you enacted an ordinance, the purpose of which was to bring transparency, visibility to the many people, I believe, that are paid to advocate before the city staff and decision-making bodies like you on behalf of a client. Some people come here out of their goodness of their heart or their personal feelings. Other people are here because they're being paid to advocate. Those are the lobbyists. Those are the people this was supposed to bring transparency to. I've not heard anybody on the council ask how that is going, but it's not going very well. Two and a half years later, after enacting this, we have a total of one lobbyist who is registered, Ms. Shawna Schaffner of CAA Planning. And she reveals on her form that she has about a dozen clients, some of them as far away as Vancouver, Washington. But the public does not, even for that one lobbyist, know what those clients in all those scattered places have hired her to lobby for. Even though the ordinance specifically said that the matter that they are supposed to be, that they've been hired to lobby on, as well as who is paying them to do that, both are supposed to be revealed on the forum. So there's something radically wrong with this. This is not working. You are the city council. You enacted this. This is the policy that you wanted. I would recommend you ask our staff, what happened? Why is it not working? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I'm Bob Yates. I've lived in the community for about 40 years. I'm an active sailor. I'm a former class president for the Harbor 20 and fleet captain for the Harbor 20s, and I'm out there sailing about 100 days a year. And I have a close kinship with the other boaters that use the bay. And this means the hundreds and hundreds of junior sailors that are out there all the time. It also includes the kayakers and even the electric boat people. This bay is crowded with people having a wonderful time. And we really applaud the work you've done to get the dredging to start and to clear our bay, because it does need to be dredged. But I have some concern about the size and the scope of the CAD project. It's going to be 300% to 600% larger than the estimated amount of soil that is contaminated. So it's huge compared to that. And it means bringing in a lot of huge barges, tugboats, dredging machines of a size and scope that's never been seen here before. And you're going to dig a hole in the bay much larger than the amount of soil that is projected to be contaminated. And I see, okay, we have this, and they put that contaminated soil in it, and that's all well and good, but now we have a hole that's half-full or a quarter-full. And what's going to happen at that point in time? Are we going to get contaminants coming up from other communities that have contaminated soil? Are they going to bring in stuff? I keep getting, oh, no, it'll never happen. But then if it doesn't happen, what do we do with this big hole? Where are we going to get the sand to fill it up again and cap it? And what's the cost of this? What is the outcome of these things that, whatever does happen in the next two to five or 10 years with this big hole we've got in the bay? And I haven't had a good explanation, although I've asked the people about this before. And I'd like to have an explanation of that before you proceed to take any positive steps to dig this huge, huge hole in our bay and obstruct all the sailing and all the boating and all the wonderful things that go on out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item or any non-agenda item? Yes, please come forward. Yes, either side works.
My name is John Rosen. I'm a Newport Beach resident. I spoke at the last hearing. This is going to be very brief. I just want to thank you for the effort that everybody put into making hard decisions and to what you did on the 27th, and I appreciate it. I can't apologize for the crowd because I'm not responsible for them, but I've been at enough of these to know that it isn't easy on you when you've got a loud, boisterous group. But it's misplaced passion, but it's passion nonetheless. I would urge you, if there's reconsideration for the tennis and pickleball club, for that plan that was submitted and turned down. As I said last time, putting pickleball into that plan is what we were hoping for and doing so as a function of the plan where it's a commitment and where that's what's being vetted by the council and the city and the planning division and the staff and so forth is done. That's where the rubber meets the road here, and everything else is important, but it isn't necessarily as core as that. So whether it comes up next month or whether it comes up three or four or five months down the road, developers have a right to do what they want with their property as long as it meets the regulations that are set forth in front of them. And we, as pickleball members, are a different set of people, right? We have a different interest, and we're hoping that those two align. My ask is this, and it's somewhat rhetorical, because I don't have to, right? But is to say this, that when the time comes to evaluate the reconsideration or to evaluate the Plan B or any other plan with regard to something that we really care about, if you'll rely on the facts, if you'll ask hard questions, right? And make requests of the details and the data necessary to see that it really can be what everybody is asking for it to be or suggesting that it might be, right? Does it have the components to be pickleball? Are they taking the steps necessary to ensure that it ends up meeting everybody's needs and all the constituencies that are requesting it? So that's what really matters. Again, thank you for, thanks for everything you did a couple of weeks ago, and we appreciate your efforts going forward as well.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. Wow, what a difference two weeks make. We now know that not only was not enough testing done, but the one test that, according to the Army Corps of Engineers' own handbook, the one test that needs to be done in order to place a commercial industrial CAD in a residential recreational harbor wasn't even done. The so-called experts that the city of Newport Beach relied on let them down and turned in an application that was incomplete. This is the equivalent that if you were trying to get a home loan and you got the appraisal, but you didn't get the asbestos test done, and in the meantime, they found lead paint. Loan denied. The Coastal Commission is going to deny this permit. It's not going to approve an incomplete application, and especially now that we know that the material is hotter than ever. And now you know. And now that you know this information, you have a choice to make. And it's up to you. Obviously Duffy's not going to do it, because this is his plan, and I believe his heart was in the right place, but he's been led astray by these consultants that put together an incomplete application. So that leaves the rest of you. Joy Brenner, you have always been a friend to the people, a friend to the environment, and we're so lucky to have you on the council. Diane Dixon, you led the council in a 6-1 vote to allow us to move forward in an alternative plan, and for that, we are grateful. And then the moment that we tried to ask the city as we were moving forward in our alternative plan, if we could see their data, they shield it from us. So we had to get our own data. And thankfully... So we had to get our own data, and thankfully, we did. And now it's understandable why they were shielding this data from, from us, because it's hotter than ever. Kevin Muldoon, you will go down as the greatest mayor in the history of Newport Beach. When the governor of California threatened to close all the beaches during COVID, you asked your councilmen in all the surrounding beaches everywhere, and no one would stand with you against the governor. So you personally sued the governor, and you won, and you kept the beaches open, and for that, we are grateful. And then, when the, our own Chamber of Commerce wanted to close down the Newport Beach Boat Parade, you again stood strong, and again, we are grateful. So that brings us to you, Will O'Neill. This is your chance to shine. Democrats look at you, and they think, there's a young Kennedy. Republicans say, a young Ronald Reagan. But it's up to you now that you have this information. You've got to go into this closed session meeting now and convince the rest of your council members to shut this plan down. If you do, we will forever remember you. If you don't, we will never forget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay, seeing no other requests to speak, we're down, done with the public comments on non-agenda items. So on to current business, item number fifteen, staff. I'm not sure we need a report. Are there any requests for a report on the DIAS? Yes.
Some questions answered. Could we get a few questions answered that were brought up by the audience?
Oh, on the, for public comments? Yes.
Yes. Like, is there a missing manual that was not used? Is there testing that was not done? Are there levels higher than we think there are supposed to be? I, you know, if they're saying that, I'd just like to either have an answer for them or find out why we don't know.
So we reviewed, so let me take a step back. There was a comprehensive environmental analysis done. This city council approved the environmental impact report, and we went back and we took a look to see whether the guidance was followed. We believe the guidance was followed, and we believe that there is nothing that has been missed and that it's a comprehensive report and that the environmental is, is adequate. And even went above and beyond in some areas. The city worked with the regulatory agencies to come up with some of the modeling, and we feel we're in full compliance. So I don't know if Dave Webb, who, you know, his department handles this matter, has anything to add, but from a legal perspective, we think that, that everything was done that needed to be done.
Yes, mayor, council. That's my understanding. Our consultants follow the rules. We've had the EPA and the Corps weigh in on that. The Water Board's looked at it. The Coast Commission is looking at it on Friday. The staff report is, has been reviewed by the staff, and they're looking to approve or actually recommending to approve. So I understand the consultant made a claim today that they did a grab sample and found something else. Testing, as you know, is very random. There's a, there's a specific way to test, and it's not like you test every spot. You test various areas, and it's usually accumulated. And there's a procedure on how to do that. So I, I can't validate what they said tonight, if they found what he said, nine parts-per-million. That's, could, there could be a spot in the harbor that has that. There could be one that's zero, you know, because it's random, and they look at that all together. Does that invalidate our tests? No, I think that's accounted for when they put these testing procedures together, because they know you're hit and miss when you're doing these tests. So I'm confident on what we've done. I don't see any reason that we've done anything different on that. We'll validate that. I was actually gone last week. I didn't see some of this, but I know the staff did, and Aaron looked at it, and feel confident that the procedures were filed, followed, so.
Okay, thank you. I, somebody made a comment about that we needed to give the Coastal Commission permission to deny this or something, and I thought, we don't ever have to give them permission for anything else, that they do their own thing, and if they feel like they see anything missing, they definitely could use that as justification to do something other than what their staff recommended. So barring any additional information, I just don't see how there's much that we can do at this point in time to, to change it until the Coastal Commission looks at it.
And just briefly, this isn't on the agenda this evening, so there wouldn't be a, there really isn't an opportunity for you to debate it or to take any action.
Okay. Thank you.
It was nice to hear staff's reasoning. Okay. Okay. On to the present item, there's a request to hear staff report on this plaque issue. I don't see one either. Any public comments on this plaque item? Please come forward now.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. And for clarity, this last item on this very brief meeting is a revision to Policy B-9 that has to do with the naming of parks and public facilities. Something that the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission plays a role in, so it's a little surprising that they were not asked to review this revision to a policy that they have such a role in. My comment is it could be looked at a little more carefully than it has. And if you can be a little bit patient with me and actually look at what you're asked to be approved, which is on page fifteen-eight of the staff report, that would be the new policy, I would point out that the existing policy, if you look at Provision A and you look at Provision B, they both address public parks or public facilities, as if they are two separate things. A refers to parks or public facilities. B refers to parks or public facilities. And then we come to the new Provision D, and it just say plaques for city facilities. And the implication is it applies only to city facilities. I believe when a new park is dedicated, you do put a plaque on it. So I would suggest at the minimum it say plaques for city parks and facilities. She'll have this kind of plaque, if that is your intention. Otherwise, nobody knows what is supposed to happen when you dedicate a park. And then number two, this new section about plaques, there's nothing mentioned in the existing policy about plaques. This is trying to say what the plaque will say on it. It's not mentioned when or how there should be plaques or even what they're for. And the only clue you get is from the title. So I would suggest that the least, Section D say dedication plaques for city parks and facilities shall include what it says here. And that, at least to me, would make it a more sensible policy, and I think if you had PB and R review it, they may have made those suggestions. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Any other speakers on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll move staff report. Okay. Any requests to speak on, for discussion? Nope. Oh, yes, councilman.
I'd like to know the answer to Jim's questions. Do we, would we like to include parks as far as our dedication plaque goes?
That's a good idea. We'll make sure we add that to it, if you want to incorporate that to the motion.
Okay. Yeah, happy to amend my motion, include that.
I just want to ask a clarifying question, just to be clear. So the city manager will have the discretion on this, these plaque decisions, and also the discretion includes whether or not to include, using your judgment, a prior council's action to approve an item that subsequently, years later, another council is dedicating it. So just, I'm not, there's no value judgment here. I'm just clarifying the process.
Yes, that's correct, to kind of make that call on the, the size of the project, the significance of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilman O'Neill.
Yeah, real quick. This has been something I've said for a while. I, I actually don't think we should have names on building plaques. I, I think all of this ends up being taxpayer money, and just because we're up here, doesn't mean that our names should be on there. So I'm going to vote no. That's because I've had a longstanding belief that we, we really shouldn't be having names of frankly, anyone on plaques. I like narratives. I like reading narratives on plaques, but when it comes to the names on them, I, I don't think we should have them. So I'm going to vote no. Thanks.
Councilwoman Dixon.
I just want to clarify, are we talking about individual names or names of the city council members? Will this policy go beyond just names of the city council members?
Is that a question for staff?
Yeah. For you, is that what?
Yes. Well, it ha, it does have names of council members at the time of the opening.
But are we also enabling to name buildings? Is that what this is?
It's not the naming of a building. It's just for what the content of a plaque, a dedication.
A typical government public building plaque of who was involved in making the decision.
And just having some uniformity on what, what content is on those plaques.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Avery.
I concur with Councilmember O'Neill. I've been clear on this before. I think less is more with plaques. I think a narrative is, is a good idea. It's strictly about how it came to be and maybe a little bit of history. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Okay. Any other requests to speak? Okay, let's vote. Do you accept the amendment?
Yes, I do.
With councilmembers Avery and O'Neill voting no, the motion carries five-two.
Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council, either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Yes, councilman.
I kind of need to ask some questions about this. So I, I would like for us to clarify, so maybe reconsider is the, the motion, some of the things that were said and have been said about this pickleball issue. And so if by reconsideration, if I request reconsideration, it's not a matter of getting one side versus the other to come and testify before us, it's a matter of us getting some specifics answered about whether they're going to be apartment buildings or whether they're going to be hotels or, and if there definitely are going to be pickleball courts. So can, can we bring it back to get some of the questions answered, but encourage people to not have to testify how much they love pickleball, because I think that has been very well established.
So we're not allowed to have discussions related to this item.
You can make the motion for reconsideration. You know, it's a, it's a non-debatable item because it's not on the agenda tonight. So typically, the way this works is just to make the motion and then get a second, and then it's up or down whether to bring it back or not.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Okay, it's non-debatable.
With councilmembers Avery, O'Neill, and Mayor Pro Temblon voting no, the motion carries four-three.
Thank you. And tonight, we are adjourned in memory of Ron Presta.